And so it opens up a side panel.
So I'm raising my hand. Do you see anything?
Do it again.
I do not.
Dan Schmidt did.
I didn't see her.
You might have to just physically raise your hand, Ernie, and I will try to keep an eye on the screen and recognize you.
Okay. What about me? I'm not on the screen. Linda.
Linda, are you calling in, Linda?
No, I'm hearing.
You don't have a camera?
Right.
Okay. Oh, so you, um, that's tricky. No. Any suggestions of someone who doesn't have a camera, how they can get recognized? She may just have to say.
They get a tap on that microphone or something. You won't know who it is though, exactly. That's the problem.
Right, right. Okay. We'll do our best to recognize everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
What if you just say your name?
Linda. Okay. Can do that.
They're already rolling.
Okay, I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, at 7:30 PM at the City Hall Auditorium. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Cleve will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any indulged decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk now please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Kelly, would you please state the reason why you're not physically in attendance, and if anyone is in the room with you?
There's no one in the room with me. I'm quarantined, and I can hear everybody.
Alderman Dowd.
Present. I'm here by myself, and I'm practicing the good graces by staying independent of crowds.
And I can hear you as well. Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you state why you are not able to attend, and who's with you, if anyone, please?
Yeah, nobody is with me. I'm here because I'm social distancing. I have a really high exposure rate working with people from PR.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Tenza.
Present. I am here. I am also taking the recommendations of public health officials not to go out and expose myself and my family to potential sickness.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
And could you please state for the record why you cannot physically attend, and if anyone is with you in the room?
She is here.
I'm here.
She is. I'm physically. My apologies, Alderwoman Lou.
No problem.
Alderman Jaddy.
Here, and I'm alone, and I'm following the advisory to stay at home.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Hello. Yes, I'm here. I'm alone, and I am staying at home because I am in quarantine.
Thank you. Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I am also just social distancing.
Thank you. Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am in the room alone, and I'm also keeping a social distance after all with my 12 beautiful grandchildren. Definitely don't want to pass anything on.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I need to make an announcement, even though there's no one in the public here right now, but due to the COVID-19, it is a civic responsibility to maintain the health and well-being of all national residents. We're asking that if you've had cold symptoms, fever, cough, headache, or diarrhea within the last 72 hours, that you please leave the meeting. To maintain social distancing of six feet, we are asking all to sit in the seats identified and not move the chairs or otherwise disrupt the social distancing. We ask that everyone please refrain from making hand contact and respect our not shaking of hands. In the event that you need to cough or sneeze, please cover your cough and/or sneeze using tissue or by coughing or sneezing into your sleeve. Please dispose of the tissue in the trash bin, and please wash your hands afterwards. Thank you for working together to break the chain of infection to spread this, prevent the spread of disease. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, do you wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. First, thank you for arranging the meeting so that many people could participate remotely. This is consistent with what we're trying to do throughout the community. And I had a couple of things that I wanted to address tonight, the first being the coronavirus and the city's response, our community's response to this pandemic. Of course, our goal in all the social distancing we're talking about and all of the other steps we're taking is to limit or contain the spread of coronavirus, protect as many people in our community as we possibly can, keep people safe and disease-free. So we have instituted a number of measures. First of all, Madam President, right here, the Board of Alderman is doing a remote meeting so that people do not get exposed to others. But we are also, we've also taken the steps which we've discussed before. The City Hall is closed to the public, is working remotely. Most employees are working remotely, except for essential employees who are coming and working on the job. Those, of course, include police, fire, first responders, as well as our street department picking up the garbage, and the people plowing the snow like this morning, and people who work at the sewage treatment plant. Now, we've also taken other steps, and we're working very closely now with a number of people in the city. First of all, with our hospitals, Southern New Hampshire Medical Center in St. Joe's and the medical people there, and the National Guard, which I will detail in a moment, as well as, of course, our own employees, Public Health Director Bobby Bagley, and Emergency Management Director Justin Katz and their respective staffs. We attended a meeting yesterday at Nashua High School South involving all of these participants, including the hospitals and doctors and medical people. And the purpose there was to, along with the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, to open up an alternative care site at Nashua High School South where people could stay if the hospitals become overwhelmed. And that will be a site, and the second site will be Nashua High School One. Now, what the medical director of Southern pointed out at the time, I think he's just telling us what at least is within the realm of possibility, maybe probability, but probably just possibility. He pointed out that there's some modeling down out of the University of Pennsylvania suggesting that Nashua could get, the Nashua region could get 2,500 cases of people who need to be hospitalized because of severe symptoms, mostly pulmonary distress. These people would all be at risk because if breathing stops, obviously, a person can't survive that. The two hospitals are gearing up as much as they possibly can and increasing their bed counts. But once they do that, Southern will have about 200 beds, and St. Joe's about 175. And so 375 people will be, would be possible to take care of 375 people in the two hospitals, assuming no one else is there for any other serious and acute reason. So he pointed out that, of course, the hospitals can't take key, that Dr. Shearer, the medical director, pointed out that hospitals could never care for 2,500 people at the same time. Now, this may sound extreme, and maybe it is, but as we've seen what's been happening in Italy, where the death count went up again today, Tuesday, they're a little ahead of us, and in New York, where the number of cases has been doubling every three days and is up to 25,000, and it's climbing rapidly. If we don't take steps to contain the disease and it begins to spread, it begins to spread freely, the number, the impact on the community could be very, very dire. So we're trying to avoid that. Hence, the steps to work remotely from City Hall, closing City Hall and the like. The governor has ordered that all restaurants and bars be closed. That, of course, has worked a great hardship on a number of people, but we're trying to save people's lives. Also, our schools are closed, and the school department, Dr. Mosley, is instituting remote learning, which involves computers and also hand out a paper homework and lesson plan, plans and the like. Now, here in New Hampshire right now, we have 101 cases, that's as of yesterday. But the testing is behind. Only one positive case so far in Nashua. There are seven in Manchester. But the testing is behind because some of the people in Nashua, there's a couple in a family of the person who has the virus that went in where the tests were taken on Thursday. The results aren't in yet. So the testing is definitely behind. The 101 number comes from yesterday, and we don't know what the number is today. I don't think it's been announced today. But a number of other people in Nashua have been tested, and we'll have to see. But again, it's very important that we limit public gatherings to, according to the governor, no more than 10. So a step that, after meeting with all of these medical people, that I felt we needed to take was to suspend the fixed route bus system. Because as we talk this through, the buses are a small, relatively small space where there can be a lot of people gathered together. And if any one person on the bus gets, happens to be infected, and we know that people can be infected without having symptoms or mild symptoms, it could potentially infect a lot of other people. There have been cases down in Connecticut where one person attends a gathering, spreads it to others, it gets many to others, results in hundreds of cases. So we suspended the fixed route bus system for the, or until the epidemic passes a bit. We have, though, beefed up on the paratransit or call-for-ride system so that people who need to get to an essential appointment, which would include medical, pharmacy, going to the grocery, can call and get a ride, and they would be charged. So we're expanding that number of people who are eligible for this service. Usually, it's just ADA, disability-qualified. It would be expanded to include the essential trips that I mentioned. And people would be charged a normal price of $1.25 per trip. So we hope that that will help meet the need for people who really have to get someone. But in order to limit the disease, in order to limit the spread of the disease, it just seemed like contained buses that carried a number of people could be a very likely place where the virus could spread. We have many people who are working very hard on this, in addition to all the folks that I mentioned. I mean, we definitely have heroes in Nashua, and those include, of course, our medical workers who are going to work every day and potentially get exposed to the virus and have to come home and wonder about, you know, how they, how their family would fare if they did get the virus. We have our first responders, police, fire. We have our people working in the pharmacies, even the people who work in the grocery stores because the supermarkets, because they see many, many people. An essential service, of course, to keep the supermarkets open. So those are some of the steps that we're taking, Madam President, and we are praying that the steps I've described and others that we may take in the future will help keep the number of infections in the city of Nashua and this entire area to a manageable level. I would just urge that everybody take care of themselves like we are here. Please wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, which I will do right now, and keep your distance. No handshaking. Try to work remotely. Do anything you can to limit contact with a lot of other people. So I think that concludes what I intended to say about the city's response to coronavirus. It's just we owe thanks to a lot of people. We have volunteers. I didn't mention this yet, but we have many volunteers. We're working hard to reach out to the students who don't have enough to eat and who are distributing hundreds of meals every day at various schools around the city. And in addition, some of the fixed route buses will be used to go to three locations beyond where away from any short trip to a school, and that's going to start sometime this week. So there will be three additional sites using the fixed route buses to carry the food. So again, thank you to everyone who's involved. It's been a huge community effort. Everybody is pitching in. It's just wonderful to see that happening. Madam President, the other item that I wanted to address is one that I wouldn't normally get into in great detail, but I know that you are, the Board of Alderman is not holding many committee meetings during this time, and therefore, I'd at least want to outline the details of this. And this is oh 2011. The reason I need to do this tonight is to give those who are attending either in person or remotely a sense of what it is that we're trying to accomplish here. As you all know, and we've discussed this many times, city healthcare costs have gone up considerably, 3.3 million in the current fiscal year, and are projected to go up 3 million again next year. This $6 million increase is a major expense, a major increase in itself represents a 3% taxing. The causes are more, are multiple, increased claims, increased prescription drug costs, a workforce that is aging, and other price increases. So I asked the Administrative Services Division and Financial Services to come up with, work with our consultants, Workplace Benefit Solutions, to come up with what are called plan design changes to see if we could bring costs down or reduce the rate of increase. So they have met, and they have come up with recommendations that could save considerable money for the city and for the employees as well. The first group that we're proposing that we ask to, whether we make these plan design changes for are the unaffiliated or the so-called merit employees. These are a group of employees that we did pass merit legislation in the last couple of years, merit reform, and they benefited significantly from it. We met with them about the changes that I'm going to describe back earlier in the month, on March 12th, here in the auditorium, and was attended by many people, and there were very few comments, and it seemed that all questions were successfully answered. The primary goal is actually to get people to switch to the high deductible. Because if you know someone on that plan, you can benefit significantly. You get paid to be on the plan. You can carry these, and that's $3,000 a year. You have a $4,000 deductible, family deductible, and you pay very little after that. But there's the gap between what you receive in cash, and the deductible is only $1,000. But it creates great incentives to try to ensure quality care while at the same time paying more affordable rates for things like lab tests and things like that. In any event, if you talk with people who have the high deductible plan, or right here in City Hall, some of them have been able to accumulate thousands of dollars, $10,000 or more over a period of five or six years. And that is money that you can take with you to another employer, or if you leave, ultimately, it's treated like retirement. So there's a lot to be gained. But for those who stay with the HMO once the plan changes are incorporated, their working rates would actually go down by 15%, meaning the monthly amount would come out of their check would go down by about 15%. The changes are relatively simple. Pharmacy co-pays are increased from 515 and 35 to 1030 and 50. Those are the deductibles. The major increase is the increase in the deductible for the people who make, have inpatient hospital visits or outpatient hospital or urgent care visits. Those deductibles would go from $2,500, excuse me, $250 for an individual and $500 for a two-person or family plan to $1,500 and $3,000 respectively. But again, this accomplishes two things. First of all, for the employees, it encourages them to go to the high deductible plan, which even though the title of it sounds very negative, it's not. If you look into the details, you can really, people really benefit from it. There are certain groups of employees we have where 50% of the employees are on the high deductible. Number two, even if you stay with the HMOs, your weekly deduction from your paycheck, the employee's paycheck, would go down by 15%, and the city would also save money. The reason I'm mentioning this at length tonight is that the enrollment period for the unaffiliated employees and all employees is mid-April. So if we're going to institute this, we need to do it by the first meeting in April. I know there are limited committee meetings. There are other groups of employees that are probably going to accept, at least one other group of employees who are probably going to accept this in the near future as well through negotiation, and I think it's something that we have to incorporate in the, in all of our labor contracts. In any event, I apologize for the length of this, Madam President, but again, I knew that you're not holding a lot of committee meetings, and I think it is something that will benefit the city budget as well as bring working rates down and encourage people to move into really a more advantageous plan, the high deductible. So I'm hoping the Board of Alderman will adopt this within a month, in other words, two meetings from now. And I wanted to give the details so people could hear about it if they don't, if there's limited committee meetings or if they're remote or if people can't attend those. In any event, thank you for your indulgence, Madam Chair, Madam President. And I think that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I hear you say that you don't need this till our second meeting in April?
The first meeting. Two meetings from now. Two meetings from now.
Two meetings from now. No, it'll be our next meeting. One meeting, our next meeting.
You need it at the next meeting. I'm sorry.
Very good. Responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for all of his efforts in addressing the coronavirus, COVID-19, and making sure that we flatten the curve as much as possible in advance of the event. I think we took on a really effective early action. I think the public may not have fully understood the magnitude of what we were facing. So it took a lot of courage and power to say, well, we're listening to the experts.
Tom, can you speak a little louder or closer to your mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think it's a lot of courage to say, we're listening to our public health professionals, and we're doing what's right for our constituents and our residents, whether or not it's popular or not. So I just wanted to thank the mayor for taking that step.
All set. Alderman Lopez?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Jim, I know you're extremely busy right now, but could you, in the next couple of days, touch base with me by phone so we can talk about the meetings? Budget meetings?
Yes, of course. No problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Response to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none? Okay. Alderman Lou.
Thank you. It was a lot I couldn't hear. Mayor, don't just... Can you hear me okay?
I can. I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me.
No, that's okay. I was just checking before I started. Did you say this represents a 3% decrease to something? I didn't. Or an increase?
Jim, is your mic, are you unmuted?
I said that the amount that the employee pays, the so-called working rate for the employee, will likely decline 15%. That was the decline I was speaking about.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I guess that's it.
You bet. Okay. Recognition period?
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of March 10th, 2020, and March 16th, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
A communication's been received from Alderwoman Elizabeth Lou regarding boards and commissions the Aldermen are members of, in which they are liaisons.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Alderwoman Elizabeth Lou regarding liaison report on the National Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to accept the communication from Alderman Lou regarding her liaison report on the Nashua Arts Commission. Period for public comment relative to items to be expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 9, 2020 Human Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
None.
Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R 2025, relative to the approval of funding for the rebuild of the solid waste cat compactor from the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, sir, during fiscal year 2020, in an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Dowd?
Linda.
And Linda. Alderman Gathright. Sorry, Linda. Given its first reading, I will assign Resolution 2002-5 to the Budget Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2026, adopting the 2020 consolidated plan and authorizing the mayor to apply and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program funds for fiscal year 2021.
Additional sponsors?
Linda.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Klee, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign Resolution 2002-6 to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
Ordinance O 2011, revisions to the Health Plans section of the unaffiliated employees' personnel policies.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Klee, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dowd. What's the committee's pleasure? This is something the mayor has brought up to us a couple of times, that this needs to be passed expediently in order to have the open enrollment and everything for the month of April. And I'm wondering if anyone has any desire to pass this forward tonight? Alderman O'Brien?
Madam President, would I be in order to make a motion for final passage?
I think we have to suspend the rules to, have to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading.
Okay. Madam President, can I make the motion to suspend the rules so that we can have a second reading?
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Lu.
I haven't heard this discussed in detail and from, I think it's the first reading of this. You folks, it may have been admitted or brought to the board before, but it is the first reading, and so I'd like to review it before voting on it.
Okay. Further discussion, Alderwoman Kelly.
And Linda wants to talk too.
Okay, Linda.
Thank you. I appreciate the city going back and looking at this and giving us some revisions, because I know this is a big item from a budgetary standpoint. I do echo that I would like to hear a little bit more than just the mayor's remarks in terms of what the changes are before we just make a decision on this.
Very good. Alderman Klee.
We're just suspending the rules to have the discussion. Is that correct?
Any further discussion on suspending the rules? Alderman Jettie? Alderman Jettie?
I'm just, had to unmute. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, you know, I too agree, this is a significant change, and it may be very meritorious. But I think to suspend the rules to allow a second reading, avoid sending this to a committee for a full exploration of what it means and what it provides for, and provide for an opportunity for, you know, people to weigh in on this, I'm opposed to that. I would be, you know, opposed to suspending the rules to allow for a second reading tonight. I think it ought to be referred to a committee, and if that committee has to meet remotely, like we are tonight, that's fine. But I think it deserves an opportunity for the mayor to explain in detail what this is for, and also an opportunity for anyone who might be opposed to it to voice their opinion. So I would be against suspending the rules to have a second reading tonight.
Very good. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
I'll forget Linda.
Oh, Linda.
Alderman Gathright.
All right. I agree with all that spoke before me, and that was my thought pattern. My thought was that we really need someone to weigh in. We heard our mayor's, and I respect him, truly respect him. But I also would like to make sure that others, that that would affect, would have opportunity to speak to it as well.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. I would like to ask a question of the mayor through the chair, if that's okay.
It is.
But my question to the mayor is, this is not a new, tangled idea. There's people currently that do have the high deductible. And so it's just basically limiting the choices that are really up. This is not a new program that's already existed. And it really isn't that much of a power.
For the inpatient hospital visits, aimed for outpatient surgery and the like at a urgent care facility, it does increase the cost of the deductible considerably from $250 to $1,500 or $500. But it brings people's working rates down. Now, it's something we have talked about, at least some people, but this is a first reading tonight. We can, we do need to get this passed in April, early April, the first meeting in April. It doesn't mean to be passed tonight. It is the same thing that Manchester offers, I believe, is we've worked closely with Manchester on trying to develop design changes that could save money. But it's not, I mean, I think the employees have a lot to gain by this. But could I go back to the buses, because something just came in on the email, the announcement from the state today, just I want to, it's pretty interesting. When the governor was talking today, or whoever had their press conference, it turns out that an individual who rode on a Concorde Coach Law and was infected by coronavirus and rode from Concord to Logan and a couple of other trips, it's been discovered that this person was coronavirus, had coronavirus. So now, any person who was on those buses and has developed symptoms should stay away from all other people and immediately contact their healthcare provider. Now, the point is, they know, might know who are on these conferences, but in our case, on the fixed route system, we would have no way of knowing who was on this. It would be impossible to track. So I just, I wanted to add that, Madam President, just to kind of demonstrate why this bus step, I think, was the right thing to do. In any event, I apologize for digressing, but I think I answered Alderman O'Brien's
Anyone further, any discussion further on suspending the rules for a second reading? Alderman Lu.
Thank you. I understand my colleague addressing what it may be limited to, but I think without careful review of how the contract stands as it is, as opposed to the three pages of changes, okay, the one page of changes that it involves, I don't want to just recap it as it's just a change to this, or it's just a change to only that. And I don't feel comfortable, I think we all know that we can have meetings remotely now. If it comes in for first reading, I would think that it would be somewhat of an unusual thing for it to be asked to go to a second reading in the same night. And I just feel strongly that people that want to weigh in should be able to weigh in on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Klee.
My question is to, I'm sorry, is to Attorney Bolton. Can you hear me? You can hear me? Okay. I can't hear me. So the question to you is, this still has to be a public meeting, even though they're doing it remotely, we still have to allow the public in. So we would have to set something up like this, or is that not?
I hope I'm audible now. This is a public meeting. If you send this to a committee, the committee meeting would have to be done in public, which it could be done in a similar manner that we're using this evening. You can table it at the board level and discuss it at the next full board meeting. It's really up to the board how it wants to proceed from here. I guess some of you are inclined to pass it this evening, and that would be appropriate
Alderman Klee, did you have something further?
No, I just wanted to make it clear that we would have to have a public, so someone physically would have to be here so that the public could, if they did choose to come, could speak. Because it sounds like my colleagues are looking to hear from those people.
Further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
This is Linda, and I just have a question. If we suspend the rules tonight, does that mean that it doesn't go to the committee?
Yes, if we pass it tonight, it doesn't go to committee.
Right. And then it will come before the full board, correct?
It will be before the full board this evening.
Oh.
And that will be, if we pass it tonight, that's the end of it for us.
Okay. You've answered the question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of Ordinance 2011. Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to second reluctance that was needed to just move forward with this. I know it's a pandemic, and that we're all kind of bunkering down. But at the same time, we don't want to make decisions now that can't take back later or introduce processes that aren't well-vetted. And I think a lot of that includes public trust. So it's a little precarious right now, where we need to make it very clear that we're not doing anything without planning it out or really vetting it. I'm not really comfortable trying to approve a plan that I've barely seen at all.
That's fair. Further discussion on suspending the rules? Alderman Dowd.
Since we're having a discussion that seems to be steering away from the motion on the floor, I think that if we defer this to a committee, then everybody that's concerned about this particular legislation should review it thoroughly before that committee meeting, so that committee meeting is not elongated by discussion that could be answered by researching the legislation.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Anyone further? Alderwoman Kelly.
If I miss it, is Alderman Karen on? This would go to personnel, correct?
Yeah. Yes. Alderman Karen is not on.
Okay. I just wanted to know if she would be open to holding a remote meeting in the next week or whatever. We would need to expedite this for the city.
She's not on, we can check with her tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
If she's willing. You're welcome. Anything further? Alderman Klee.
Again, I just have a question, again, for Attorney Bolton. He mentioned about that if we did do a second reading, we could table it to the next meeting, at which time then we could have a further discussion, and it would give the opportunity of the public to send, those that would be affected, to send an email through that address or show up here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that we don't want to hold more meetings, because as the mayor said, this, I don't know if he said it tonight or not, but this pandemic locally is going to get worse before it gets better. The fewer meetings we need to have, the fewer times we have to have the public come in before us, I think the better. I would prefer not to hold committee meetings at this point, even if they're virtual. I would prefer not to have the public come in and speak. And I think that's really the message right now, is that we don't want to hold public meetings. And if we have this, we could have 25, 30, 40 people come in, and I'd rather not do that either. So I will be supporting the motion to suspend. Alderman Lu.
Thank you, President. Well, if we're going to refrain from sending, if there's going to be more second hearings, then rather than have a second hearing on the same night, things are, you have the first hearing. I think that if you're going to ask for second hearing, it would be helpful to know that so that the due diligence can be done ahead of the first hearing. Because the normal process has been that the first hearing sends it for review, more thorough review.
Are you referring to a first reading and a second reading?
That's what I meant. Did I say hearing?
You did.
Yes. Yeah, I meant first reading. Because I typically go and I review the discussion in the committee meetings to get a sense of the scope of the subject. So, I mean, I just think that if we're going to try to have first and second hearings on the same day, then it's not hard to notify us, hey, let's try to have the first and second meeting, hearing tonight. If not, then, you know, I'll do my due diligence, but have a second hearing at the next BOA meeting, full meeting of the board. Thank you.
Can I, can I say something here?
Attorney Bolton?
It would be illegal for one of you to notify the rest of you in advance of the meeting, of any intention of what you wanted to do at the meeting. So if I understood correctly the suggestion that by way of telephone calls, series of telephone calls, or email, or other communication, one of you were to notify a majority or all of the rest of you of an intention to move to suspend the rules for a second reading, that would violate the right-to-know law, and it would violate it in a way that has not been suspended by recent action of the government.
Thank you, Attorney Bolton.
You had Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I've had conversation with Alderman Karen recently, and she cannot come out for our meetings physically, she would be in a high-risk category. And also, she does not have capability to do a meeting remotely. So... So you would either have to select another committee to go to, or whoever's second in line and deputy in that committee would have to run the meeting.
Motion is to suspend the rules.
You had Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Lopez.
I was just, I had a question through the chair, or through the president, to the Corporation Council.
Could you speak closer to your microphone again, Alderman Lopez? Thank you.
If the mayor were to the board to bring something in under suspension, would that violate it? Because he doesn't really have a vote, per se, so he could indicate that that's his preference, even if that's not what we end up actually doing.
The mayor, being not a member of the board, has a right, a constitutional right, to contact any or all of you who suggest what he would prefer.
All set, Alderman Lopez? Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. So it seems to me that people don't necessarily want to take a final vote on this tonight, but also are worried that we're not going to get a committee hearing in before the next, the next Board of Alderman meeting. So I would, and maybe Attorney Bolton can correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we pass a motion for a second reading tonight and then table this piece of legislation until next meeting, potentially, we could know, give notice to the public that we'll be taking it up next meeting without having to go through committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you've heard that. We can suspend the rules and then table it and take it up at the next full board meeting, and that would eliminate the need for a budget meeting in between, where I think things are going to be a little bit worse here in the city than they are now. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I understand the conversation as what is going on tonight. But at the same time, too, I'm very concerned. I don't think anybody real here is an insurance professional that completely understands what we need to do in this type of situation. And like the mayor mentioned, so he relied on, it sounds like a group that he is particularly assigned to go in to look at this and to come up with a solution. It will have a savings to the taxpayers, yet at the same time, pretty much still give our employees, which I am somewhat familiar, I was a merit employee for 15 years in the city. And I understand, too, with the coronavirus that we've got here, we've got to have trouble with the meetings. And now we discuss, the chairman of that particular committee may not be able to make the meeting. So who do you refer to? Well, you refer to the experts. And to me, if this is the expert opinion that has been given to the mayor, and this is the road that we should go down to, then I think we should weigh pretty heavily with that expert opinion. And so therefore, I am going to vote, vote to suspend the rules, because I have some faith into our experts that have looked at this and come up with a plan for the city. So, in support. And I'm saying, Madam President, let me say it now, because when the motion comes to table, it's a non-defeatable motion. So, thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate all the comments that have been brought forward. I still am very uncomfortable, and I think Alderman Lopez brings up a really good point of, yes, this is a situation that is an emergency. We are doing remote meetings in order to keep everybody safe. But I would not like to see us set a precedent where we don't talk through something that's going to affect all the employees in the city. And I personally know from being on the Personnel Committee for two years, that there are things that I hadn't thought of until someone comes up and is able to at least speak on it. So unless somebody knew it was on the agenda tonight, we're not even giving them an opportunity to speak. And I really think we need to make sure to not set that precedent.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you. And I'm going to actually address Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly, if that's okay. Alderwoman Kelly, I think that we were told, if we suspend the rules, table it and then bring it up for discussion at the next meeting, making notice to the public that it would be discussed. They could either attend, or, as we addressed, they could send an email with their discussion and so on. I don't know if that makes it more palatable for people, and as well as the public, that we're trying to take everything into consideration.
Alderman Kelly, and then Alderman Lopez.
And Linda has a question as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I'm fine with that. I would like to make sure that Kim Kleiner or whoever would be heading this up in the city does give us a full overview of what the changes are as well. Thanks.
Alderman Gathright.
All right. I'm just curious, and I think my question is to the mayor, have there been any discussion about this process with the AFL-CIO or SEIU? Whichever group is involved with this, as far as unaffiliated?
The unaffiliated workers.
Yep.
Alderwoman Gathright, the unaffiliated workers are not represented by any union.
Okay.
So instead of talking to their representatives, we held a group meeting here in the auditorium a couple of weeks ago, and there were, I don't know, 75, 80, 90 people present, I think. And we talked through all of the details. Ms. Kleiner was here, Mr. Griffin, I think Mr. Budrow, all of the people involved, and had a handout sheet where we explained, which explained all of it, in addition to our verbal explanation. And then took questions, but there really weren't any. Before that, we had talked to the division directors and gotten their input on it. So we have addressed the employees and offered to discuss it with them or explain it to them. And at least, my perception is, we have not really had any objections. I mean, I think a lot of people like the idea that the weekly contributions would go down. Now, you know, and under certain circumstances, they would pay more. But I think another thing that is beginning to sink in with the employees to whom this has been properly explained, and in the school environment, I'm not sure that's happened, but that the high deductible plan is one that can really benefit most people. And as we explain it and discuss it more and more, that is being adopted by more employees. And this change, as we explained that day up here in the auditorium to the employees, encourages, if you don't like the changes, encourage you to move to the high deductible plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend the motion.
Attorney's saying you can't.
Okay.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of ordinance 20-11. Further discussion on that? Alderman Jettie.
I just wanted to, after hearing all of the discussion, I just want to remind my fellow Alderman that, you know, the way that we normally deal with legislation is it's referred to a committee, and the committee has a chance to analyze it, discuss it. You know, people can come in, you know, either, in this case, either, you know, they could come in remotely, or they could communicate by email, and they could, you know, we could all learn. I mean, the committee could explore, you know, what this is all about. I appreciate the mayor's explanation. And, but, you know, I'm sure that in the end, it'll probably, you know, it sounds like it's a good move, but I'm concerned with our suspending the rules and moving forward with this. It sounds like the plan is, or, you know, some people have suggested that if we suspended the rules, we could then table it and discuss it at the next meeting. But, you know, that's not the way we normally deal with this. Are we going to have people, you know, coming in and explaining it to us at our next meeting? And, you know, how long is that going to make the next meeting? And will we be then, you know, hearing people talk about this and then voting on it on, you know, on the spot? I would, the way we normally deal with things is the way I would prefer. We do have time, we, you know, before the next meeting, we could schedule a meeting, and it's unfortunate that Alderman Karen can't participate. But, you know, she's not the only member of that committee. If that's where you send it, you could also send it to a different committee. But, you know, sending it to a committee would allow us to, you know, learn more about it, hear about it, discuss it, and then, when it comes, make a recommendation. And then, at the next Board of Alderman meeting, we could then vote on it, fully understanding what we're voting on, and fulfilling our role as Aldermen, which we owe to our constituents. It's, you know, it's not, I don't feel comfortable, I don't think we should, you know, just vote on something based upon, on the, you know, what the mayor has told us tonight. I don't doubt that what he's saying is absolutely true, but I think I owe it to my constituents to review all of that, research it, you know, talk to people, and then vote on it based upon, I owe it to my constituents to look at this myself and not just accept, you know, what the mayor is saying. And the mayor said that we can, you know, there's no emergency that requires us to suspend the rules tonight. We could go through the normal process and vote on it at our next Board of Alderman meeting. And tonight has shown us that we can do this remotely. We don't have to endanger ourselves or others by doing it the way that we normally do things, which I think is the correct way.
Anyone else?
This is Linda.
Linda, Alderman Gathright.
I'm just realizing that this is a conversation that we've had in many meetings with, on the board about this process. And I remember Kim was, Director Kim was there and everything else. I just want to ask, is it some kind of way, can we move, I don't know, can I move the question? Because at this point, I believe that everybody knows what they feel and what they want to do. And rather than prolong this evening, can we move it? Is that a legit term here?
Yes, you can move the question.
Thank you. Move the question.
The motion is to move the question. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 10 yeas and 3 nays. And that motion carries. The motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Aren't we just asking to move the question?
We're going to vote.
We're voting right now, Alderman Lopez.
I understand we're voting, but I thought that Alderman Gathright had asked to move the question, and that we would have to vote on moving the question first.
We did that.
Okay. So just to be clear, now we're voting on whether to suspend the rules?
Correct.
Thank you for helping.
You're welcome. Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Hear me? Sorry. Nay.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Nay.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
Suspension of the rules? Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 8 yeas and 4 nays. That motion passes. Second meeting of ordinance 2011, revisions to the health plan section of the unaffiliated employees personnel policies. Do I have a motion? Alderman Clay.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
The motion is to table. Would the clerk call the roll? Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can now, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. And Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 11 yeas, 1 nay. And ordinance 2011 is tabled for the next full Board of Alderman meeting. First reading of ordinance 2012, amending the zoning map by rezoning land off of Tinker Road from rural residence R40 to B suburban residence R18. Seeing none, given there being no objection, I'll accept the first reading of ordinance 2012, referred to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National Planning Board, and will be scheduling a special Board of Alderman public hearing as soon as conveniently possible. First reading of ordinance 2013, amending the zoning map by rezoning land off of Amherst Street from Park Industrial, PI, to Park Industrial with mixed-use overlay district, PIMU. Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Schmidt. There being no objection, I will accept the first reading of Ordinance 2012, refer it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National City Planning Board, and will schedule a public hearing, a special Board of Alderman public hearing as soon as conveniently possible. Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Alderman. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, President Wiltshire. I just wanted to make a comment about that I, I think that this process is very difficult, and I think all of my colleagues are doing an admirable job, and I really want to commend everybody on everything that they're doing. I also wanted to make a comment about the volunteerism. I've been contacted by, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, but his first name is Pedro, from In-N-Out Burritos, who, who wants to offer meals to those who need them. And he was asking who he would contact relative to meals for the high school students. So if anybody wants to get ahold of him, they can contact him at In-N-Out Burger, I mean, sorry, Burritos, In-N-Out Burritos. And they could, or they can contact me, and I can put him in touch. Thank you to all the public that are stepping forward and doing all of this. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to offer some thanks to everybody who helped to get us up and running for this remote meeting. I know that it wasn't easy, and I think everybody did an incredible job from that standpoint. Public, public health and safety is so important right now. And on that note, I want to thank all the leaders, everybody in our city who are still working to combat this, from the janitors who are still coming to City Hall to make sure it's sanitized and ready to go, to our nurses, firefighters, police, even the community activists who are reaching out to make sure that our students have food. I think that we're really coming together as a city against this, and I really appreciate every single contribution as we keep moving forward.
Other comments? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, a couple things. One, and Attorney Bolton can correct me if I'm wrong, but anyone on the board, if they have a question about a piece of legislation on this, also applies during the budget. If you have a question, you can submit it in writing to the department head, or any city employee, but, and the budget will be department head, and we'll get a written response, and it will be shared with everyone on the Board of Alderman. And as long as we don't have conversations amongst ourselves, that's the proper way to do it. So on the insurance question, if you review the legislation, do your homework, and you have a question, you can ask whoever the mayor wants to designate as the point person to take, to handle the questions, and they can give us a response in writing, probably through Donna. And Donna can then give us, give all the Aldermen a copy of that, and you, and that will help with any of the discussion going forward. There'll be more on the budget as we get closer and start scheduling budget meetings, and they will be all remote.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Anyone else? Comments? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the public because as much as we're in the middle of the
Talk closer to your microphone, please. You're really hard to hear, Alderman Lopez.
Okay. Is this better?
Thank you.
Yes. So as much as we are in a pandemic and everybody's practicing social distancing voluntarily, it also can be a tremendous burden on people particularly who are extroverts or who need social supports. So I just want to remind the public that Mobile Crisis Response Team is still operating. They're using all of the safety precautions that are appropriate, and they are open 24/7. So if you're in distress, reach out to someone. Their number is 603-816-0101. And then also, for people who thought I wouldn't have an event to announce, I do. This Saturday at 7:00 PM, we're doing an online fundraiser through Involve to Impact. We're trying to raise money for masks to donate. So if anybody's interested in maybe hanging out with people while not hanging out with people, just go to involvetoimpact.org. We're trying to organize it there.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank all of the people who are sewing masks. I don't know if you're aware of this, but there are hundreds of people who have gathered up fabric and are sewing their little hearts out to make sure that the people who need masks at least will have the simple masks that we can produce. But it's a huge thank you, and I just wanted to make sure folks knew about that. Thanks.
Anyone else? I'd like to take a moment to thank the mayor, and
Sorry. I'm so sorry. I was trying to hit the button.
Okay. Alderman Gathright.
I just want to thank, you know, Dan, I hear you, and I know there's quite a few people here in Nashville that's really making the mask for people, but, and the nurses, and I say that because, of course, my baby girl is one of those RNs that are out there. And I just want to thank all the people that are volunteering at the school to give out the meals at lunchtime for the kids to take home. Just remind the parents that most of the schools, the elementary schools and the junior high schools are open. I believe it's 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock for you to pick up meals for your children for the next two days. They're only open on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Alseth Alderman Gathright?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I'd like to take a moment to thank the mayor, public health, I, first responders, I mean, everyone. Everyone in this city has really come together. As difficult the situation as this has been, I think our, some of our businesses have stepped up and, and are making things that they don't normally make. It's really been a really awesome community effort, and I want to thank everyone, those essential personnel, and those that are not quite as essential, but still as important. So thank you to everyone out there for the tremendous work in social distancing and doing everything you need to do to help prevent the spread of, of this virus. Committee announcements? I'm going to announce that there are no committees.
I like that.
I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nope, sorry. We need a roll call. My bad. Would the clerk please call the roll? Right.
You're on mute, Sue.
My apologies. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Leading by example, yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Hear me?
Yeah, I can, thank you. Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
12 yeas, 0 nays. And we are adjourned at 8:48 PM. Thank you, everyone. You, too, city clerk.
So welcome.
Good night, everybody. You did a great job. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Bye.
Trish, by the way.
Thanks for that call.